There you go.
Yeah, okay.
All right, just to refocus what we're supposed to be doing. The portion of the delayed use regulations, it's Article 10, Section 5J, Subsection 2D.
Yeah.
And it requires for mines, for special use permanent access road at all points, including without limited to the main entrance and exit shall be at least 1,000 feet from any existing residence or public building. That's the limited issue that we have, the board has to decide tonight. These other issues that the folks have raised, they're all great points and certainly to be considered, but for our purposes tonight, we're only allowed to decide that issue. Whether we grant that variance or not, I've been making that determination since this is a rehearing. If we disturb it, if we reverse it, modify it, or null it, the original variance that was granted in April, it would have to be by unanimous vote.
That's correct.
And upon consideration of any prejudice to the applicant. So with that in mind, you can, at this point, you've been given some written materials tonight, you've had a lot to consider from the residents here, we thank you. You could take that under advisement and table us for now to review those materials and think about it. We could vote right now, and at which point you'd have to run through those five factors for the area variance as it applies to this application. So those are basically the options right now.
Well, in terms of tabling it and then reconsidering something else means another meeting. And what I'd like to do is find out whether or not we have any kind of a consensus now to do anything, because tabling it just means that we all have to get better again, and it has to be, you know, it's an advertised meeting, blah, 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 and so forth. So we ought to at least have a discussion of what we've heard and what we think, if anything, the proposed set of actions might be.
I think kicking it down the road, I think we've heard from Mr. Felito and his lawyer, and also from the residents, and I can't see that putting it off for two weeks or three weeks is going to change any of the information myself.
Right, but you can still develop some aptitude for conditions, which you might want to fix two of the variants. For example, you know, maybe it's one truck entering, one truck leaving, not simultaneously, but that sort of activity modification. Or, you know, certainly the speed on the road, while we don't oversee that, we could certainly make a contingent on maybe some study of what would be an appropriate speed. Part of me was saying, geez, you know, maybe it ought to be 15 miles an hour, because it's a lot like Fandereab driving down through the holidays, you know, in the village of Fair Ave where it's 15 miles an hour. It's a very nice ride, I don't know. But that's a possibility, certainly. We had talked earlier about trucks through the hamlet as being problematic, we're against our zoning law. If that would be a variance, it could be entered.
I almost have a real problem with that, because if a vehicle is duly licensed and if it doesn't violate the weight restrictions, I know of no restrictions you can put on a vehicle in a community at all like that. They've tried that in skinny apples and died. But I'm not saying that you can't, but I think that's a real problematic issue, that, you know, what we're talking about is a thing that says mining trucks, and it picks that out, as opposed to one filled with cattle. Can't drive through, what do they call it?
Route 41.
Well, through a former village, what do they call those things?
Hamlet.
Hamlet. Okay, you know, that's kind of overspecific. I don't think that'll stand the test of law, I really don't. I don't believe that. So we'll set that aside. This is for discussion. Yeah.
So it's conceivable that.
Yeah.
And trucks going north as well as south.
I think any good lawyer can fix that.
And to Rich, to your point, you know, under the town law 267B, it reads, "The Board of Appeals shall, in the granting of both use and area variances, have the authority to impose such reasonable conditions and restrictions as are directly related to and incidental to the proposed use of the property. Such conditions shall be consistent with the spirit and the intent of the zoning ordinance or local law, and shall be imposed for the purpose of minimizing any adverse impact such variance may have on the neighborhood or communities."
Well, we cannot dictate what highway speeds are required, we can certainly put some kind of constraint on them.
What about the number of trucks?
Now you're controlling commerce. We clearly can't do that. That's my opinion, I'm not a lawyer.
I stated a holiday and expressed the other way.
Well, there's that. Did your wife know?
No. What else?
I don't know.
Well, Kevin says, Kevin, the point that's in front of us is about the driveway, the variance to the driveway, and does it meet the tolerances or does it meet the codes of requirement of 1,000 feet?
Well, clearly it doesn't, and it can't. So what the applicant is asking for is relief from that.
Yes, and I think, I went to a, there's a thing called, what do you call it when the law is written by?
Case law.
Case law, okay, thank you. Alzheimer's is tough. One of the things about case law adjustment that was passed down said that you can't give a blanket variance. So if a variance comes along that includes several pieces of property, you're supposed to make that several variances, so that they can be popped off one by one, if need be, fulfilled, object, la di da di da. That's just a point. And so what, really, the point I'm asking is, how many actual properties are within the 1,000 feet? Because there are a couple on this map that they have, that don't have a 1,000-foot radius on. So if we're talking 10 residences, then generally speaking, it is good common sense to deal with, just make a 10 variance and grant them all at once if you want.
We have that opinion.
Okay.
Yeah. South pit entry, egress, it looked like there was essentially three significant.
This one down here, and where was that?
You've got.
Oh, yeah.
Rogers, Welsh, and Cooperus.
In the town of Victory. Who was in the town of Victory?
Mr. Cooperus.
Is your name on here?
He's 26-1, 92212.
What?
It's a taxman number.
Oh, sorry. I tried to pull my.
13123 Sanford Road.
All right. At any rate, where are we with anybody else coming to you?
Well, I have these eight parcels here that were presented to us for the hearing. And essentially, by utilizing the south pit entry, there are less non-conforming than the north pit entry, right? So as far as, I don't know how you establish significance in closeness, you know, is certainly someone like the Allinger, Welsh, and Cooperus households, they're under, well, from 600 down, 634 down to 344, so these are very close. The rest are over 1,000, except for Todd Seymour, who I believe is to the north of the mine, and, yeah, and he's at 958 on one parcel and 713 on another. But the rest are over 1,000 feet away. So what it seems to me is that the south end of Sanford Road is the most infringed.
And that's where all the traffic's going, then? Is that what, your comments where that's what you're taking, is that, is the south?
All trucks are headed south on Sanford is what your plans are.
Any other thoughts or questions, who are going to deal with this?
No. I haven't had a call. What's that? No, I don't have any more comments.
Well, okay, let's see. One of the things we can do is postulate some potential solutions, or, we can either gather more data, which is a way of postponing the making of decision, or we can postulate some potential decisions and see where we get. If we can't get to a unanimous vote, we can either, we got two choices, we can either declare that the rehearing is, the rehearing is complete and nothing, nothing has changed, or we can table. So my suggestion is, if, a thing that Mr. Palmieri had said before, not to give credit to whatever, is that we consider adoption of a resolution that we amend the original variance, so that instead of two separate entrance/exit points, that there will be a single one, and that the variance be modified that way. We could vote on that, if we think we have enough information to do it with. If we don't, if we can't come to a unanimous vote on that, we can go to another one, to another one, to another one, to exhaust all of the possibilities, and we have those two choices.
My three concerns are the speed on the road, the structure of the road, I don't know about subbase on that road, I don't know if there needs to be a core on the pavement center of the road. It certainly is problematic in my mind that there are three-foot-deep ditches on the side of the road.
I think that's a good point, but I think.
And that the road is only maybe 20 feet wide, if that.
I believe that the, that the town law insulates the town if overweighted vehicles damage the road, and that the company that owns them repatriate, pays for the damage. We'll ask the deputy supervisor if that is an appropriate approximation to truth.
Well, that's a fact, too, right? So the road gets damaged prior to, as opposed to knowing the engineering study that says, this is the road, this is its capabilities. We don't have that information.
You guys, you have a road reservation law, I have one on the road.
Yeah, that might not be good enough.
Well, I don't know.
It's not the point. The point is, if you're going to do a road to handle the trucks, you make sure the road is designed to handle the trucks. And what we assumed was the correct answer was when we heard our superintendent's roads tell us that the road was upgraded. But we don't know the technical details of that, all right? And that's, that's a problem. And there's no, there's no reason to pursue an action that's going to create problems down the road. I mean, my philosophy is, if you're going to do something, you're going to do it right, and do it right the first time. So we have, we have enough information here to say we got questions, right?
I tend to have a little bit of a different take. I don't believe that we have any way we can, that's not our daily work. That's my opinion. I think that if there's a problem with the roads, the highway department has to fix them up to where it'll survive, or Mr. Felito and Vissella and everybody else who breaks them has to fix them. But I don't know that that has anything to do particularly with the approximate location of the residences within the 1,000 foot, which is whatever. I think questions of safety with driveways and backing out and doing something or others is probably more demeaning, but it's my opinion, and I, you know.
I understand completely, I see what you're trying to take.
Anybody from the Board of Education have anything to say?
So if there was, can we talk hypotheticals? If there were a motion made that we just modify the original variance to accommodate one entrance for ingress and egress?
That is, does anybody have any questions? I might have, but I'm just saying, does anybody have any questions that would inhibit us from having a, supporting a motion like that to go ahead and modify it and prove it? If we do, then we ought to move on to something else.
I would just want conditions in that. It seemed to me that a lot of the issues that were brought up are really issues with the planning board, and we're concerned with the variance right to that entrance and ingress and egress.
If we were to prove this variance as he's requested, it still goes back to the planning board to have to review, and also have to seemingly deal with all of the particular issues that have been.
Those are.
You know, they're, they're the filter for those things.
Yeah.
Or the filter for this one variance.
All the things that the people in the audience have brought up are all legitimate questions.
Right.
I'm now on the planning board, I can't tell you how I would react, but they don't apply virtually at all to anything that we have to decide. We're only deciding the entrance/exit proximity, and whether or not that, we have enough evidence or discussion or whatever it is to go ahead with the change. It has nothing to do with the goodness or badness of the mine or its proximity to anything other than those entrance and exits. But I think that in terms of the entrances and exits, I think that safety is a problem, and I think, according to Mr. Palmieri, that we probably ought to have some kind of a constraint on, and have a, we can't put in America, because we can't, we're not in that business, control over how vehicles proceed up and down Sanford Road, because I think it's problematic that we'll have an accident up there near us. My opinion, and I'm only one of four and five. But if we don't think we, you know, when these gentlemen haven't spoken, and I keep talking.
Shut me off any time you want. So what's the result of a denial of a variance? Is this a, does the property have an access at all?
Well, we can't, we're not there yet.
Well, that's a question, so, you know.
Yeah, that's something that we would have to, we have to weigh, we have to weigh granting the variance against the other factors that, the other five factors. I guess the way to look at it is, you have to consider how this is going to impact, how those five factors are going to be impacted by having a driveway that's less than 1,000 feet. In other words, if there's a, are these same concerns going to be there if the driveway are 1,000 feet away or 200 feet away? I mean, that's the way to look at it.
I understand, yeah, that's a good point. And one of the things we could do, if we were to consider one of these options of either, for example, considering whether or not we should amend the variance to being only one, is to go through the five things and point out. The noise is going to be the noise, whether or not it's two entrance, two entrances or one entrance or whatever is another issue. I think what I'd like to do is to see if there's a way we can come up with a decision on any one of the four or five potential solutions that we have. Vote on it, if we can't get there, we got two options, which is either say the rehearing is done and it's called a boot, or table it.
What does you then, whether to? Say that again? What should we do? Go through these items?
Go through these things, given that, if there were to be one, all right, we're going to consider, as we'll go through and find out whether or not we have a problem, if there was just a one entrance exit.
So this should be whether we approve it or not?
Whether we approve that, if we were to approve that, that's what the modification would read, and we'd be going on with that. If not, we'll go back and consider some other option, and see if we can get there that way.
Would be to modify it solely to take into account of single entrances?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And like I say, there may be more, there may be more than one area variance, maybe there are points underneath it or something, because I know someday somebody's going to come up and say, one of these isn't right, or one got added, or one got subtracted, and where the whole thing is. I went to a training session like that. "All right, the Board of Appeals shall consider for area variance whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant." That is, he could get in three or four places, he could get in perhaps in some other place kind of a thing, and if those don't work, I don't know, by helicopter, I don't know if that works.
Does the property border any other road other than Sanford?
Could you lease a right of way from Mr. Keeling's remaining property, get over to some other road?
You could go straight across Sanford Road and come out on that along four.
Well, he is still going across Sanford Road, there was an exit there, so, I mean.
Well, he could build a road, you have your other parcel of property that goes to 38, right? Does your?
Yeah, it doesn't go over 38, there's a parcel on the pass side, and it doesn't bother you.
So it doesn't sound like there's some other way to do it. All right. "Does that cause an undesirable change in neighborhood character or the nearby properties?"
Yes.
Well, it may cause a change, but if he hasn't got any other way to do it, or do we just deny that he has an exit entrance? That's a whole different, we're down into, we're down into serious litigation that Mr. Cox will be tied up with for years. So, I mean, the reality is, it may change something, but can we, can you move it someplace where it would be less invasive? You know? Or you just say you can't have an entrance exit. I don't know where that goes. You know, that's not going to go anywhere. We've already been down that path, because we had the first one, and we did approve it. "Whether the request is substantial?" I don't know what that means.
To my perspective, it's substantial on three parcels, because they're at 300 feet.
Well, okay, where do we put it so it only affects one? We could put it in Mrs. Allinger's driveway. No. You know, I, what I'm trying to do is find out whether or not this, this is, does anybody have, if you think it's substantial, or you think it's undes, you know, you got to say, I think this is, I'm going to vote no, because it has to be unanimous, whatever we do. "Whether the request will have an adverse physical or environmental effect." Well, the DEC is the DEC, they do the environment, they are, they are the lead agency for that.
I'm just surprised that the DEC doesn't respond to the problems that you've noted. Grant me mine, I mean, there's, there's a thing called the Clean Air Act, PM 10, PM 2, you know, all the partic, they shut down a town in Maine because of dust.
It's a New York bureaucracy.
No sin.
You know, I don't know, you know, I, we had hogweed for how many years that nobody did anything about, you know, so you can, and people got burned on it. "Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?"
No.
I didn't understand what you mean.
Well, what he said was, in a sense, it was self-created, but unlike a used variance, that's not a death sentence. If this were a used variance, like he wanted to set up a pornography shop next door to high school, then, you know, that would be a self-created thing, and it would be a death sentence, because in a used variance, you can't do that. In area variance, it's a, it's a factor, but it's not a death sentence. And it probably is self-created, that is, he bought the property knowing that so well, like somebody that had shortcomings. Question is, do we have problems with any of those five things? If not, then we probably ought to vote on it. If we do, then we ought to go on to the next potential scenario, which is going back to the two entrances, and see if we can get a vote and get Mr. Felino, who's been as patient as Joe in through this whole process. So is everybody in here in the audience?
He's young, he's got a lot of time.
No, he's got, he's got gray hair on the temples, I saw that, as everybody in here has. I know it's a, it's a testy issue, and I understand that, I've been through, I've been into testy issues before. So let's start with Mr. Wilson. Do you have any issues with combining this into a single entrance/exit for these five things that you find withhold, withhold water?
I don't. I don't think I would have a problem with it being a single entrance, provided that it's for one vehicle at a time. You know, we're really talking about 300 feet, not a lot of room for these trucks.
I don't know what that means, but we'll talk about the condition to the minute.
Okay, sure.
Brad? I mean, if you just have an out-and-out problem with it, we're just going to the next thing.
Well, I mean, we gave the variance before, and he's just made the condition to bring it from two entrances to, an entrance/exit to a single. So, I mean, it's not a driveway that didn't exist before, it's just he's doing everything out of one driveway.
True.
Is what he's decided to do. So from that standpoint, the variance in and of the simplicity of what it is, I think, you know, I don't have a trouble, because we didn't have, we did, we granted it before. The concern, I think, is far greater what everybody's shared, that needs to go to the other level, or the other board that needs to, they need to dissolve out all those things.
I prefer to see a single entrance and that entrance and an exit. It's actually better.
I would like to say that, given the kind of opposition that we have here tonight, I have been in other places party to extending runways on airports, which were fought tooth and nail, and if we hadn't approved them, you wouldn't be flying in and out of Syracuse today. I understand how that affects everybody, but there's nothing like having roaring proper jet planes flying over your house at 300 feet, at so many per hour, to really crystallize how bad you feel about progress. However, comma, sometimes things do need to happen. I don't know that this does, but I'm just saying that it's, that's the kind of thing that comes up. I'll have my comments after Mr. Palmieri. What do you see as an issue?
Well, the big problem I'm having is, everybody's comments were valid. This is the wrong board to be talking to, essentially, in part, because this is entertained through a special permit, his ability to do a lot in the town of Sterling, and that's the purview of the planning board. What we're deciding here is, does this piece of property have a north driveway and south driveway, or just a south driveway?
Or a north driveway. It will be in court.
For no driveway?
Yeah.
I don't think you can do that, because I think, well, any. Because I think, well, any property's probably allowed 50-foot of access.
This is the town hall, the township, don't worry about that.
This is closed right now.
We got a discussion from the gallery this morning.
Yeah, so, I guess I should have cut my mouth shut.
What? Oh, what did you just say? You said something that triggered you.
I was talking about our decision between the north and south.
I will tell you this, in some jurisdictions, actually, in almost all municipalities in the state of New York, site reviews and special use permits are the purview of its own point, not the planning board. Because it constitutes a difference. They aren't in this instance, so we can't address most of the things you brought up. Otherwise, I don't know, we'd come up with anything better. I think that the single-use entrance exit is probably a better solution than the dual. I don't know of a better place to put it. We could try and wiggle this around all you want, put it up and down 50 feet, or do whatever it is. But I think we're almost where it needs to be, in my opinion. We approved this once. I don't have a particular thing in hand other than some constraints that we can put on access in granting the amended variance. And I think that we can probably come up with something. But I think that we would probably get to that point. Everything I've heard here, right now, says that we can probably get to an approval if we can figure out what, if any, conditions we need to put on it. Did I hear something other than what I just said?
You know, my concern, our conditions are on, you know, traffic. I don't think we have the legal ability to put those kind of conditions on. And even like limiting the, I mean, we could say limiting one truck at a time, but who's going to be there to, you know...
I know what that means.
Federal mandates, you know?
I know what that means, because I've seen things which queue up. All you need is, in any kind of an operation like this, to have a school bus go blink, 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 down the road someplace, wave, or somebody come out, and it's out of the house, and it backs these 12 trucks up. I don't know what you do about that. So, yeah, I understand, but I don't know how to do that. And it's just like the traffic thing. I think there is a safety issue. I don't quite know how to solve that with speed, but there's, there needs to be something. I don't know why. You guys are smarter than I am, you tell me. I think that's a condition, I don't know what are the conditions.
I don't know, we can't dictate the speed on one road, so...
Well, if you're allowing a driveway to access a 55 mile an hour road, you should have some.
Well, you know, there, you can do, you know, I don't know what I can say about that. Mr. Sopra's not here, so I don't know what we can... And he's not the one that grants it, it'd be accounting thing, I believe. Is Sanford Road accounting, or is it Town Road? Anybody know?
Town Road.
Town Road. It's not a Town Road, it's a Town Road.
Both roads are Town Road.
So, what do you guys think about any kind of condition? You got some kind of idea how to proceed here?
Mr. Felino just whispered to me, or something, I think he did about the power to say, what about truck signs, truck entrances?
Well, I believe that, I think, you know, I'm assuming somebody puts up one of those yellow things that says caution trucks entering and leaving highway. I don't know what that means. You know, I understand that, but I think the problem, the problem I see is, there are occasional blind spots and hills and things, fully loaded trucks coming in at 55 miles an hour. All of a sudden, something, some kid, little dog, whatever it is, runs out for a while, they won't stop and talk.
Maybe you can put a truck sign on Engles Road where Felino called for a while, where there was almost an accident the other day.
What? I didn't understand that, but, I couldn't hear you.
Engles Road, we're down the Grand...
Okay.
It's a gravelbed area owned by another, that Roselli held out of. There's no sign there. It's a blind hill.
Well, I, you know, I...
I regret taking it for full, I regret that.
I understand, and that's why I don't know how to, that's why I don't know how to put a, put a constraint on the highway department, whether it's the Towns Highway Department, or anybody else that's regarding speed, anything else. I don't know how to do that.
I don't say to the building, and that was a 55 mile an hour. If you can't change it, and those trucks are going to come over the hill towards my house, and they have 55 miles, until somebody comes and tells me that it's 15.
And they're going to, they're going to get out of here.
Yeah, I know.
Well, the speed limit isn't our issue, it's the driveway. Okay, and the other goes to the planning board, as far as road regulations, being a Town Road.
I understand, I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think so.
If the truck's getting up to 55 miles an hour.
Well... No, downhill it can. I, you know, and Mr. Utes had a, had a good point, which is, I don't know, you know, we don't have the purview over the, over the roadways, or the speed limit, or whatever, that's not our, we don't, it's not our job to, although I think I have issues with it, in terms of safety, this, that, and the other. And the question is, does the planning board? I got Mr. Planning, he's sitting right behind him. You know, it's...
I think we need to make a motion.
Mr. Even.
I don't know if I can...
Ah, Mr. Defferson. Yes.
You're got, is the question to change it from two entries and exits to one? If that's the question, are you going to vote on it?
If we, the question, the question we have now is, are there conditions that we need to put on it? And if not, then we'll vote on it. If there is, we need to figure out what it is. I'd love to vote on it and get out of here soon.
Charlie.
There are still conditions, because you said one of yours, you have the five things you're supposed to provide. Is it going to affect people, like, yeah?
We understand that, and we took that into, we took that into consideration when we made the first...
So, does it matter?
Yes, of course it matters.
I'm just doing, you're not waiting.
Yeah, okay, all right, we're getting out of here, and I've been chastised, the conference, the portion of the meeting where you get privileges to the floor has vanished, it's gone. Thank you.
All right, so it's our discussion here. We've already approved before.
Yeah.
And to, and we're talking about approving back to one, that single point of entrance. But I think we've heard a lot of valid points here, people, and there's, I think there's, it seems as if there's another, there's a list of entities that are going to need to have a say on this, before it's all done. I mean, the one gentleman back there, I don't recall his name, when he talked about, you know, the Town of Victory. Because turning south and everything going south, they're going from town to town. You know, so there might be a level of concern by the Town of Victory to have this traffic entering that way. Mr. Felino's designed this to say everything's going, coming from the south, going south. So our limited purview is whether or not we're going to approve that. And from a, maybe from our own, to benefit for our own fuller township, we have a legal, we have a legal responsibility to not put ourselves into a legal litigation over a mine, this issue, that's going to have greater discussion, and fuller discussion on all the other points.
That is, okay, we've approved this thing once. Is there anything different about one entrance exit than there was?
And that's what our discussion needs to be limited to, unfortunately. But we've given quality opportunity appeal, people may disagree, but they've had their opportunity to share a lot of places, and I think we've let them know there's other places they need to bring this to as well. People that, and the roles that have the opportunity to make decisions about those pieces that you bring, which are, it's not within our purview.
You know what I'm saying? That is, we were down, we were down this road once, so to speak. We approved it. Is there anything significantly different between having the one entrance exit as opposed to the two? If not, then we ought to get on with it. And let, let the agency, which is the planning board, whose domain is all the issues you brought up, and will reside with Mr. Bishop back there. Well, you know, that's what you get the big bucks for.
Well, the other lady made a good point, you know, how much is the Town of Victory going to tolerate? To, and not just Popa Road, but coming in, cutting a short distance, you know, and those kind of things. Those are for other groups to decide. Because that's not under our umbrella. So I want people to understand that, that we can only, we only have a certain latitude.
We can.
Here.
Eight things within 1,000 feet, and all of the real issues are other things. It really is.
Allow, make a motion to amend the original variance to allow for trucks leaving and entering the south entrance.
Single entrance.
Single entrance.
Can we specify it some way?
300 feet south of...
Is it?
The north entrance. How's that?
Designated on the map.
And the map is provided today.
Is this map a legitimate map? The one I have here, you didn't even see it. This is one with all the radii on it, and you didn't have radii for some of the properties. I didn't know quite why that was, but...
I second it.
So can we make that part of the thing?
Your motion is to amend the original variance to allow trucks entering and leaving by one driveway is located on the same.
Now, can we modify the variance, or do we have to annul it and create a new one?
No, we can modify it unanimously.
No, I understand, I got the unanimous part, I knew that.
All right, I heard what you said about trucks stopping on the road. Is there, I'm not a traffic guy. Is there any merit to one truck in, one truck out at a time, not one truck in and out at the same time?
There isn't any way to enforce it.
Yeah.
Well, you could make the width of the driveway.
Oh, well, you're restricting commerce, I think we're in trouble.
You want to get them off the roads.
Yeah, right.
They can go in, but they can't go out.
We could give them a, you know, an ATV road.
So we should probably just leave it as is.
What?
The motion without conditions. Because it doesn't seem to help anything.
Right.
Well, it's all got to go before Vern, anyway. Mr. Bishop, the guy, gray-haired guy there.
Oh, all right.
I have to go home and explain this to my wife.
Good luck.
There's also a polling board that's like last year.
I vote in favor.
We need a second to the motion.
I second it.
I second it.
Okay, you're going to be first, second?
Second again?
Yeah, okay. What did we say?
We're voting yes.
Red?
Yes. That's the limited variance.
Yes.
Five guesses.
Right, it's a done deal. If this, you know, I got to tell the deputy supervisor before he walks out. It wouldn't surprise me that there isn't an appeal maybe. Is there enough people that are, but there doesn't have to be an appeal until the planning board votes.
Do you defy appeal?
No.
It means going to Auburn, having a...
Thank you. Hey, wait a minute, we've got another piece of action. I have a business, yes.
We do need, we have one more item. Yours. Give it to Susan Monday night, either of us. Okay, we need to vote on the minutes. I vote to approve the minutes.
Five seconds.
All right.
On the table?
Five.
Hi. Should I have stayed? Did we do the business here?
That didn't happen, he didn't show up.
Oh, he didn't?
Not ready.
Did you give those information to the R G E?
Yeah.
Okay, he called, he talked to the, he talked to the break day, and the guy was going to call back, he was Mr. Callman.
Really?
So Luke said he was going to continue to call.
Okay.
But he's kind of busy, so...
This is called letting people talk to you. Where's the real issue? Bumble, bumble, the ankle hair, but that's what...